Yeah, we do have a live on Facebook screen saying that the emergency meeting to please stand by. So I'm going to go ahead and mute everybody until mute everybody until we start the meeting. Mayor Michael Foley here. I am here live on Facebook. Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is Mayor Michael Foley. I am here live on Facebook Live and Zoom meeting. We bear with us as we learn this new technology for this emergency city council meeting this evening. We will get into more details in a moment. We're just going to do a quick audio test with everyone. City Clerk Angela Holmes, can you hear me?
I'm here. I can hear you.
Okay. And City Solicitor Natalie Burns, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
I can. And Council President Gary Reardon, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Assistant City Administrator Stephen Fields, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
And Counselor Anna Turkot?
Yes, I can hear everyone.
Awesome. And we have our TV station manager Barry Dodd on with us. He'll be recording. The meeting is being recorded right now. You can see in the in the top that this is being recorded. It's also going live on Facebook Live, so everybody can see the proceedings. Counselor David Morris, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Counselor Elliot Story, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
And we can see everyone except for Elliot. Do you have video capabilities, Elliot? There he is. Perfect. Awesome. And then Counselor Claude Reganjay joined us. Can you hear us, Claude? Claude, can you hear us? Claude.
Claude's actually muted right now.
Claude, are you there? Claude, can you hear us? Okay. Claude can't hear us, so we'll we'll do our best to continue. So I'll turn it over to Council President Reardon to call the meeting to order using the agenda as he normally would. For folks on Facebook Live, I did place a link to the agenda in the posting. So you can download today's agenda and the action items that's proceeding. And then earlier, we posted on Facebook the Zoom meeting link, which allows people to attend the meeting via the same Zoom screen that we are and observe what's going on. People do have the ability to submit Q and A if we need. And as you'll see from the council rules that we'll adopt today, we'll do our best to try to do that. It looks like we have 10 guests joining us as well, so we know that it's working. So I'll turn it over to Council President Reardon to call the meeting as order, and the clerk will do the roll call.
Yes, good evening. This is a Westbrook City Council Emergency Special City Council Meeting on April, I mean Thursday, March 19, 2020. And the special meeting will be conducted in accordance to 1 MSR 403-A, which permits public proceedings to be conducted through remote access during the declared state of emergency during the provide 19. Madam Clerk, can you do, please do the roll?
Certainly. The first person that I have listed is Counselor Reganjay. Are you able to hear us now, Counselor Reganjay?
He just texted me that he can't hear us.
He can't hear us. Okay.
So we'll mark, have the record mark that he's here, and we'll work with him to.
Excellent. Counselor Shaughnessy is not here yet. Counselor Morse?
I'm here.
Counselor Chow?
Present.
Vice President Turkot?
Here.
Counselor Story?
Here.
And President Reardon?
Yes, here. Six being present, we can move on to the mayor's message.
Thank you, Mr. President. And as everybody knows, this has been a challenging few days for everyone in our nation, our state, and the city. We're really working hard to try to keep the city running. I have updated the city council on many of the actions that we have taken and also declared a state of emergency this past Sunday on March 15. And so, given that everyone has heard and seen most of my announcements, I won't go through a lengthy mayor's message. But I did want to explain that as part of the state of emergency, we have prepared a state of emergency report, which is attached to the agenda as part of the mayor's message. And this constitutes constitutes the first of several reports, which will be released during the course of the COVID-19 pandemic to provide city council and the general public with a synopsis of municipal actions taken during the emergency. And we intend to release the state of emergency report on a weekly basis going forward to the city council and public. And so on the report, you'll see all the actions beginning on March 12, when we first issued a public statement about the city's response to the coronavirus crisis. And then action on March 13, when we canceled all public meetings through April 5 and directed the Westbrook Community Center to suspend nonessential programs. And then March 15, we had the sign declared emergency proclamation as allowed per Chapter 9 of the Westbrook City Boardman's Emergency Management, and we'll talk more about that action later this evening. Let's see.
We all need to mute ourselves, so one person can talk, so there's no feedback.
For now, I've muted everyone, so if you need to speak, unmute yourself for now. So and then on March 16, shortly after the emergency proclamation was when we began to establish a bunch of different items. And the, as part of that, we established the coronavirus task force composed of key elected officials to navigate the state of emergency. We established a spending freeze on discretionary expenses not critical to municipal government operations. We canceled all public meetings through May 11. We enacted a human resource policy and procedure pandemic policy, which is also attached to this packet. We began exploring the possibility of offering childcare services at the Westbrook Community Center for emergency personnel where Westbrook residents or employees. We've allowed all existing business licenses to extend beyond the expiration until regular operations resume. And we established a city webpage to provide details on the city's response to the state of emergency, along with a list of frequently asked questions and resources. And that's probably one of the things I'm most proud of in our response to this emergency. If you go to the city's website, westbrookmain.com, right at the top, there's a coronavirus link. And that entire website, which I went through at length this week on a Facebook Live and Zoom, testing out this technology, outlining all those resources. And many of the resources there outline what city services are affected and how those city services are still active. And and also many other resources related to the coronavirus response and resources available from the state for business owners and residents. And then on March 18, I called to, I called this emergency meeting of the city council for today for consideration of legislation which will allow the state of emergency to extend beyond the period of five days. And we will get into that and also have the city draft rules of procedure for public meetings. And we will get into that on our agenda. And then also, we canceled all public meetings held in person until further notice. We suspended the in-person city council finance review of accounts payable, which is something that allows the city to release funds on a regular basis. And we've suspended that, given the state of emergency. And then we've also urged city residents and businesses to comply with Governor Mills' recent executive order, which prohibits gatherings of 10 or more people, as well as closed dine-in facilities and nonessential public-facing businesses for two weeks. And so that report is signed by me and attested by the city clerk. And so that is report number 2020-1. And we will report that to the council on a weekly basis. And all those correspondence that I outlined are attached in detail as part of that. So with that, again, this this has been a, I feel like we've done a month's worth of action in a matter of days. It's been definitely a lot of things happening very fast. And tomorrow, we will be prepared to make some additional announcements that we're still working out the details on for tomorrow. So we will prepare an updated announcement tomorrow with more information and communicate that to the council and the public. Given that, I'll turn it back over to Council President Reardon, and I will make sure he is unmuted. President Reardon?
Yes, thank you. Madam Clerk, new business, please. Mike, you got to unmute her.
Yep.
And I want to apologize. I just wanted to let you know in the Q and A section, I see Mike Shaughnessy trying to communicate that he can, he joined, he just can't get his video to work.
Thank you for letting us know that. So Angela, if you want to make the record reflect that, Michael's joining us as an attendee of the meeting. And I have acknowledged his presence on the Q and A section. Thank you, Counselor Turkot, for letting us know. You were muted. And Council President Reardon had turned it over to you to read the item on the agenda.
Excellent. Thank you. So the first item tonight is Resolve 2020-13. This is approving remote access public meetings and adopting city council rule of procedure for remote access meetings. In the rules that we have drafted, we've asked that the facilitator read the legislation in its entirety here so that city councilors can read the legislation by title only. So I will do that now. But the Westbrook City Council hereby approves remote access public meetings in accordance with the provisions of Public Law, Chapter 617, adopted as emergency legislation by the Maine State Legislature on March 17, 2020, and approved by Governor Janet Mills on March 18, 2020, which amended 1 MRSA Section 403A to permit public meetings to remote access during the declared state of emergency due to COVID-19. And further resolves that the enclosed city council rules of procedure for remote access meetings is hereby adopted.
What are the wishes of the council? Vice President Turkot? Mike, you got a, sorry.
Sorry, I'm trying to operate two screens, and I'm not my children, so. So I moved the Resolve 2020-13, approving remote access public meetings and adopting city council rules of procedure for remote access meetings, that the Westbrook City Council hereby approves remote access public meetings in accordance with provisions of Public Law, Chapter 617, adopted as emergency legislation by the Maine State Legislature on March 17, 2020, and approved by Governor Janet Mills on March 18, 2020, which amended 1 MRSA Section 403A to permit public proceedings through remote access during the declared state of emergency due to COVID-19. And further resolves that the enclosed city council rules of procedure for remote access meetings is hereby adopted.
And it's been seconded by Counselor Morris. Any discussions on this motion for this resolve? Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Just for a reminder, given in the rules that we outlined, the, since the clerk read the order into the record in the future, if we have meetings like this, then we will, we don't have to have the counselors read it into the record. But I just wanted to quickly go through the rules of procedure for remote access. Again, this is completely uncharted territory. I'd especially like to thank City Clerk Angela Holmes. And 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 along with her and the rest of the city hall staff, we have been working every day, all day since Monday, trying to navigate all these things with shuttered doors so that the public can't come in, navigating all these challenges and seeing what we can do to do things. And City Clerk Angela Holmes and her staff and all the other staff here have been very responsive on navigating this crisis. So City Clerk Holmes worked with our city planner Jenny Franceschi, as well as myself and Mr. Bryant. Mr. Bryant, unfortunately, is not joining us this evening. And we worked to work this out because these proceedings also, and these types of rules will also potentially be considered by the planning board, depending on how long this this crisis lasts and the need for these remote meetings happen. But I'll just quickly go through. The purpose is fairly obvious. The authority is obvious as well. Again, for those tuning in via Facebook Live, the link to get the agenda and see what we're discussing is available there as well, and you can get it from the city website. The description of the platform is there. We are using the Zoom video conferencing platform. This technology is used extensively by a lot of businesses. It's a new thing for governments, and it's a new thing for us here in Westbrook. I'm familiar with the technology, which is why I'd be able to introduce it very quickly for the city and help to facilitate these meetings under the leadership of myself and Council President Reardon. And so we will continue to provide meeting notice as we normally would. And as the technology allows, we will broadcast it live on Facebook. We almost didn't get that feature to work at the last minute. And then we, myself and Barry Dodd worked through it and got that live for everyone. Again, we have the the list of the facilitator. So myself or a designee will be a facilitator of the meetings and will run the meetings as normal with whoever the chairperson is. And in this case, it's Council President Reardon. The, we will invite participants into the meeting like we did with the link that everyone received. I also wanted to make the record reflect I was able to get Michael Shaughnessy in to the meeting and Chief Andrew Turkot into the meeting, as well as participants. And you can see them on the screen. And so the clerk will do the roll call as normal. And then also, under the law, it's required that there be a roll call vote. And then we've, the next section under general public participation is something we're definitely going to work through. This technology allows for the the Q and A. It allows for a lot of different things to happen, but we've limited it to the Q and A portion. Going forward, we hope to, if we have the need to have future meetings like this, probably the earliest one will be the first of April. We will have the agenda structured as normal with a with a public comment period, the first public comment period. And the intent of all this is to allow as much public participation as possible, as best to manage. So we've asked for that section that folks submit public comment to the city clerk's office at least 24 hours in advance of each scheduled meeting. And the comments must pertain to current agenda items and shall be limited to three minutes in length. So that's the standard things that we've done. We just ask that they be submitted in writing. And then they will be read into the record either by myself or another facilitator, so that way they can be recorded. And also, items not pertaining to the agenda shall not be included in the public record, but will be shared with city councilors. And then it will be reserved for comments submitted in accordance with these provisions. The other item, a public comment on individual legislative items, that's where we feel the Q and A function will come in. And myself and others can see this function. And we will, as as much as possible, allow for the communication to happen live on that function. The other place that communication or public participation may be happening is on Facebook Live. And it's a lot to monitor all these things. So we will be monitoring that as best as possible going forward. But for this meeting, we're not going to be having any public participation in the action on that item. And then then we will also include the second public comment period, where we'll reserve this for city councilors and city administration to discuss general questions pertaining to city business that can be recorded into the record. And so again, the city cannot guarantee that all publics will be, public comments will be read live during the meeting. So if we get a lot of Q and A, you know, we'll try to monitor it and group things as best as possible. And then the other thing that's important for state statute is a public hearing provision. As the counselors know, we don't have public hearing portion on a regular basis at the council. It's usually when we have land use amendments and ordinance amendments where we have the public hearing function. And so this will be more important in the future for those, as well as in the planning board participation. So again, we've asked that those be submitted to the clerk 24 hours in advance. And then we will do our best to entertain live comments and phone comments potentially submitted to the Zoom platform. Let me hit three minutes. So given we still are working through this technology, we do have the ability to potentially allow a member of the public to talk. They can raise their hand. And so those are things that we're navigating and seeing whether or not that'll work appropriately in this setting, and we'll continue to work through it. And so the last item, which is adjustments to the rules, the, myself and the administration, so I'll adjust these rules to accommodate unanticipated needs and things that may need to be changed on a regular basis, and we'll bring them up at future meetings, should they need to be adjusted on various occasions. So that is an explanation of the item for the council and public's benefit. Turn it back over to you, Mr. President.
Yes, thank you. Vice President Turkot?
My question is regarding, and this could be Mayor Foley or Natalie, if you could speak to it, would it make more sense, and I don't know what the rules allow, but to have a procedure for all instances when there is an emergency declared within the city rather than specifically identifying COVID?
Yes, this is Natalie Burns. Let me answer that question. The statute specifically is limited to the current emergency. And this will not be something that will be available without a separate legislative amendment in the future to allow it.
Okay, makes perfect sense. Thank you for that.
Mr. President, if I may add?
You all said, Vice President Turkot?
Without Mr. President?
Yep.
May I? Also wanted to add specifically for this, Counselor Turkot, the the reason for this meeting, this emergency meeting, is specifically to renew the state of emergency that's been declared, the ordinance, and we'll get into that explanation. So a lot of the business of the council and the business of the city, that authority is granted as part of the emergency management procedure. But there's some authority, like the adoption of a municipal budget, ordinance amendments, things like that, that should we need to consider those under this emergency, under this emergency state of emergency crisis, we will then have to call a meeting of the council. But in the future, we'll we'll try to limit calling the council to order for actions that that aren't absolutely necessary for the council.
And that makes, that makes sense. And it just, you know, in my world, when I see procedure, usually procedures kind of cover, you know, a variety of functions rather than that one instance. So but that that it's different, right? Running a city on emergency. So, thank you.
Few of us have ever experienced.
No.
Question. Have a question.
Yes, Counselor Reganjay?
Thank you, Mike Foley. I apologize, first of all, because I don't know, technology is not my thing. I was struggling. I was able to see you guys, but I couldn't really figure out why I was on mute. I just wanted to appreciate all the communication that you have been doing with the city in this crisis. Some of us are even scared to get outside the house by seeing you in the office almost every day. When I pass by the office, you are there and Angela and everybody who has been working tirelessly to help in this situation for the city. I really appreciate that and say thank you to all of you. So in terms of this meeting, and I think it was Counselor Anna mentioned that, and maybe you may have mentioned that mayor also in your comments. So the procedure, are we, do we have the legal rights to approve or to hold a meeting like this without that being on our constitutions? Or how does that work if, yes, go ahead?
Yeah, Mr. President, if it's all right. Yes, as the city solicitor mentioned, Counselor Reganjay, as part of emergency legislation that was enacted by Governor Mills, enacted by the Maine State Legislature, I believe, on Tuesday, this is moving very fast, and signed into law by Governor Mills on Wednesday, it allows for this meeting structure to happen. Therefore, we can have this type of meeting. Other or other municipal bodies, I believe, have had some emergency meetings, either by telephone or things of that nature. So under Maine law, we are allowed to have these meetings until this specific COVID-19 crisis ends. So we are legally allowed. What we are doing here is creating rules for it. Because this is a moving situation, it's appropriate for us to have rules to regulate this public process. We are, we are really striving to make this public process as visible as possible to folks. And, you know, there's, there's 10 people on here. There's 40 people watching it on Facebook Live. So the, we are making it, making it as available as possible. And then also, we are gonna, we have the technology we've been working on all day today to be able to, once this meeting is finished, upload and broadcast on our TV channels, the cable TV channel. So people will be able to watch it in repeat mode. We are going to explore the ability to simulcast it live on the television, but that's not something we have at the moment. So again, to specifically answer your question, this is allowed under Maine law until this, the state governor declares the state of emergency over, and therefore, all that emergency legislation is terminated, and we can hopefully soon return to business as usual.
And how long does the emergency she declared in the sign, we lost? Just curious.
I believe the state statute, I haven't read it specifically. I believe it's just until the emergency is terminated. We can get into more details about the city state of emergency and what I've requested the council act on on the next item on the agenda. But this is specifically just for the rules for the video conference or the remote meetings, as we call them.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Counsel Reganjay?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
All right. Vice President Turkot, do you have an additional comment? Vice President Turkot, you froze up.
Yeah, she's frozen.
She's playing statue. All right, I.
It looks.
Is there any other discussion? All right.
You do a roll call vote, Mr. President.
Yes, I know, but we're unable to get Vice President Turkot. But we'll go ahead and do a roll call.
Hold on. Let me see if I can, if I can bring her back. Hold on.
I see Counselor Shaughnessy now.
It looks like she she may have got kicked out. Let's give her a moment to see if she can get. Let me try to contact her via phone.
I would like to, while we're trying to get a hold of Vice President Turkot. I did attend a meeting at the city hall on Monday. And Jerry Bryan and the fire chief, police chief, city administrator, assistant city administrator, a few others were there. And to sit in a room to really kind of iron out something that's really new to us, to have this remote access going on, and with everything else going on and juggling our families, I would like to have a huge shout out to the city officials who came together that morning. I know that a few had a t- I know that a few had to take phone calls outside, but we were able to expeditiously come up with a plan. And we're currently working on that plan. So, thank you.
All right, Vice President Turcot is, has a question and she's logging back in. So if everyone's okay, we will pause a moment while she gets logged back in.
Sure.
Thank you for everyone's patience with this technology. It is, it is great technology and seems to work well. A lot of our department heads are working with colleagues around that are using this technology. And it is, works very smooth, though the company is overwhelmed because a lot of people are using this.
Couple of our councilors actually look like they could be.
Page or is it Zoom?
This is Zoom that we're on and that the, the, it's being rebroadcast on Facebook Live.
Okay.
So like I indicated, I can see right now there's 49 people watching the meeting live. And we have 11 people watching the meeting or listening to the meeting as, as attendees on the Zoom system.
Councilor Morse?
Just a question. It was Zoom a resource that was already available to us? Or is it something that we, we, we paid for now to, because of this crisis or?
We, um, can you hear me? Uh, we didn't, we didn't have this technology. I applaud Deputy Fire Chief Steve Sloan. He was instrumental in getting this up and running very quickly for the city and getting the process for this account. And we will be, as part of the state of emergency as declared at the national and state level and here in the city of Westbrook, we will be tracking this expense as part of the federal emergency disaster relief expenses. And so therefore, we will be having our TV station manager Barry Dodd take over the management of the system. But department heads will hopefully be using it on a regular basis for either meetings internally. We've met, we've had a department head meeting where we've met with public officials and public services officials, and they don't have to leave their facility and come over. And so that's worked out well. And then myself and Chief Turcot did a Facebook Live announcing the stuff that we've been doing, what we're planning to do, one of those, most likely tomorrow. And Dr. Peter Lantia, most likely is going to be joining me from the Westbrook School Department. And so now we have this technology to be able to do that. And it, it allows department heads to be able to remain in a safe place and use our social distancing. And City Clerk Angela Holmes and I are in different rooms. So we're making sure we're appropriate distance away from each other.
I hope so.
Under the CDC, guys. I think.
Councilor Shaughnessy and then Councilor Chow after.
Councilor Turcot's back in.
Councilor Shaughnessy? You're good? He's, he's muted.
I'll unmute him.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm all right.
Okay. Councilor Chow?
Yes, thank you. As a techie, I really do enjoy this. I was part of the, the president of the, the chairman of the Green Committee. And my goal was to have all the people, all the people on the committee remote in instead of drive to the high school. And I found out quickly that this was not allowed under Freedom of Information Act. And we couldn't have an online meeting and we'd have to do the regular little meeting, everyone drive to the high school. I suppose we could have walked or something, but, um, so this is, this is where I wanted to go and we're friendly here. Unfortunately, this is temporary legislation and it only lasts up until 30 days after termination or redundancy. So after 30 days after this crisis is over, all this goes away and we have to go meet the regular way.
Thank you, Councilor Chow. I cannot see Vice President Turcot, but if you, she's there.
You can't see me? Okay, well.
I only got Hollywood Squares on my, my screen.
That's, that's even better. Um, so I did have a question before I was booted off and I apologize. I had to relog back in. I think it's all the Netflix, everyone's watching. I wanted to ask about the public comment. I think it's very important for our constituents to be able to speak. So as much as you do to make that happen, I want to encourage that and my focus is on that. I think that it's a very important part of our democratic process. And also I wanted to ask if these, if we are having these meetings going forward, we don't know how long this is going to last. Who will be running them as a city council meeting? I think it's mostly, you know, most appropriate for President Riordan to run this meeting rather than administration. And I think Mayor, you're doing a great job. But I, I think that there, there's that component. So, so those are the two, I guess, comments and questions I had.
Okay. Is there any other? Mayor Foley?
Sure, I'll, I'll address that. I, I am, I, Councilor President Riordan and I discussed this and I'm not running the meeting. I'm just a facilitator for the technology. So Council President Riordan is comfortable with running the meeting and this happening. Not, he's not as comfortable with the technology. So I'm not running the meeting. I just.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to clarify that. I think for our viewers, that might not be as clear. So we just wanted to make sure that that was stated and explained. So thank you. I have no problem with you running it. Better you than me.
Yeah, I turned it over to him right at the beginning of the meeting and I've been trying to ask to speak and just as the normal procedure.
All right, perfect.
Do we have any other comments? And do we have any comments from, any questions from the public? I don't see any in my inbox. And so with that, it's been moved by Vice President Turcot, seconded by Councilor Morse for the approval of resolve number 2020, 2013. Madam Clerk?
Councilor Reganje? We might, might need to unmute everyone first.
I, I have unmuted everyone.
I think Councilor Reganje is still muted.
And Councilor Morse?
And Counselor Story?
I'm, I'm clicking to unmute them and they're not unmuting.
Oh, there we go.
Sorry.
Councilor Reganje?
Yes.
Counselor Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Councilor Morse?
Yes.
Councilor Chow?
Yes.
Vice President Turcot?
Yes.
Counselor Story?
Yes.
President Riordan?
Yes. Six, uh, seven in favor and none opposed. Brings us to our next resolve. Madam Clerk?
The next resolve is Resolve 2020-14, Extending the City of Westbrook State of Emergency. So I'll read this into the record, that the Westbrook City Council hereby renew the City of Westbrook State of Emergency declared by Mayor Michael T. Foley on March 15th, 2020, in accordance with the provisions of Section 9-5B of the Westbrook Code of Ordinances, and extends the state of emergency until such time as the mayor or his designee deems fit to terminate the declared emergency.
What are the wishes of the council? Counselor Chow?
Yes, I'd like to make, uh, recommend Angela's motion, Resolve 2020-14. To be read by Todd only.
Yep. And it's been seconded by Councilor Morse. Discussion on this, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just wanted to, I apologize, we didn't include the actual ordinance, Chapter 9, Emergency Management. Our heads have been spinning and we left that out of the packet. But I'll just refer to that in, and I'll read it into the record, the section. So the, under the Section 9-4 Emergency Proclamation, the mayor shall have the power and authority after consultation with the available city council members to issue a proclamation that an emergency exists whenever disaster or civil emergency exists or appears imminent. The proclamation, they declared that an emergency exists in any or all sections of the city. If the mayor is temporarily absent from the city, otherwise unavailable, the council president may issue the proclamation if the emergency exists. And then further on in that chapter, it talks about succession should there be an emergency and the mayor or the council president become incapacitated. Those items are available for succession of who would be in charge of the city. So I, on the 15th, as I indicated in my announcement, I contacted Council President Riordan. And he was comfortable with the declaration and communicating that declaration to all the city councilors via email, which I did that evening following the declaration. And so they, everybody was notified. And so under this, on Section 9-5, which is the reason that we are here this evening, is the termination of an emergency. When the mayor or his designee, his or her designee is satisfied that a disaster, civil emergency no longer exists, he shall terminate the emergency proclamation by another proclamation affecting sections of the city covered by the original proclamation or any part thereof. Said termination of emergency shall be filed in the office of the city clerk. And then Section B, no state of emergency may continue for longer than five days unless renewed by the city council. And we, a city solicitor, Natalie Burns, brought that to our attention and made sure that we were in a timely manner getting to that. And so that would essentially expire tomorrow at, at 7:48 PM. And so we wanted to convene the council as soon as the, this legislation to have the emergence, have the remote meetings was allowed and have that so we could move. And so under Section 9-6, the mayor's duties and emergency powers, I won't read them all. It outlines all the authority that the mayor has. And this is a very serious responsibility that I have as the mayor of the city and I don't take it lightly. And so I've had many demands from citizens and constituents of our community asking me to close businesses and do all kinds of different things that, that are allowed as part of this authority. And it's something that we, we discuss and consider on a regular basis. It was a significant relief to have Governor Mills declare the closure of bars and restaurants. As, as you may have seen in the news under the city of Portland, city manager has this authority as they don't have the same form of mayoral government that we have. And the mayor, the manager actually ordered the closure of bars and restaurants on St. Patrick's Day and offered an assessed fine for that and to prevent the mass gathering of people. Also social distancing from the CDC. So that was something that we considered and giving this is a fast-moving situation. We were literally meeting, getting ready to make an announcement and they did that. So we did add to our announcement the suggestion of that as was announced by President Trump and his 15-day plan to slow the spread of the coronavirus. So we did make that suggestion and we did not make, though we did not make that order. In Portland, they also ordered that going forward, that bars and restaurants would close at, at a curfew of 8:00 PM and things of that nature. So that is something that is allowed under the emergency powers. It also, different things allows us to take the action necessary to sec- procure things that we need and purchase things. We've, we've used the emergency purchasing ordinance in the past. So we do have that ordinance to make emergency purchases, but this allows us to get things that are essential to the emergency. And that was one of the reasons why I, as, as the, the normal authority granted by me of the city ordinance and the management of the city budget, I grant, I ordered a spending freeze on all municipal finances for things that I did not feel were crucial to the municipal operation of the city and crucial to us dealing with this emergency. There was many pending items before the city council that were going to be coming at our next meeting that we have now set aside, given the uncertainty of this financial crisis. We've also had requests of businesses and nonprofit organizations to help carry their finances through this difficult time. All of what resources have been set up for that as part of Governor Mills' executive order with both state and federal government. And so we, we are more recommending that that capacity be handled with those governments who have much more capacity than the city. And it's something that's very important to us that we try to protect the financial security of the city through, through these challenging times. Should things like this continue for months, we are very concerned about the city's cash flow. We do have appropriate fund balance and reserves that are established by the city's fund balance policy. And we want to maintain and not dip into those for as long as possible. Though they are there for emergencies like this and we could consider using those should we need. Though we will have to develop a plan to replace those as part of the city ordinance surrounding that fund balance policy. And so when you get a moment, we will send out the, this chapter for councilors to review and to see what authority is granted. And so one of the reasons that we wanted to seek the renewal of this is given the, the unknown potential of this crisis. And I also wanted to ask Counselor, I'm sorry, Chief Andrew Turcot, who is also the city's health officer, to speak to the council about the, his concerns and some of the things that he suggests that we continue to maintain the state of emergency so that working with him, we can enact things and do things that are absolutely necessary. One thing that I will share with the council that we are considering is the closure of parks and fields. That is something that the CDC has suggestions for. And we have had instances where there has been large amounts of people gathering at those facilities. And given Governor Mills' order of 10 or more people, we want to try to follow that as much as possible. So that is something that myself and our, the coronavirus task force, I'll be calling a meeting of that possibly at some point tomorrow for us to discuss the consideration of that. And so it, it is, that is something I said I take very seriously, this authority, and want to make sure that we are making the right decisions in the best interest of the community. So we will, we will be considering that, given the concerns. But I'll turn it over to, if you allow, Mr. President, turn it over to Chief.
Chief Turcot? He needs to be unmuted.
He's unmuted.
All right.
Mayor Foley, thank you very much. I'll provide just a couple of comments and then certainly President Riordan, if you have any questions, if the council has any questions, please feel free to, to, to ask those questions. Certainly, the last couple of weeks have been very, very busy for our office and certainly for every single department within the city. As, as you heard in our task force meeting the other day, President Riordan, we have been preparing for this since late December, early January. We knew it was a matter of time before it made its way to the state of Maine. Fortunately, or unfortunately, I guess, we had seen our first case here in the city of Westbrook. We have three or four pending cases. Those test results should be coming back within the next 24 hours. What we're seeing now is just, just the beginning. There are 52 cases within the state right now. Forty-two cases that are confirmed and 10 presumptive positives. And typically with presumptive positives, they will end up being confirmed just because of the specificity, specificity of how well those labs are. And the thing with the coronavirus is that it does not discriminate. You know, the, the elderly, yes, they are at more risk for developing more severe symptoms. And there are more risks for an increased mortality and morbidity. But again, you know, there's a lot of focus on the elderly and those with comorbid disease and those with, you know, decreased immune systems. But again, everybody can be at risk. And that's why we really want to emphasize and every department head and the mayors spend a lot of time focusing on behaviors, social distancing, hand hygiene. Because if we're going to stop this and prevent the transmission and further spread, it's going to be by focusing on those behavioral modifications. You know, a couple of points of clarification is that this is not airborne. These are, these are droplets. It, it's not like measles in that it, it goes up into the air and spends, you know, two to three hours, but it's going to go three to four feet. It's a, it goes into the, the nose and the mouth. And that's where you're going to have your exposure. So again, if you can stay that, you know, four to six feet away, you're going to reduce your risk significantly. Washing your hands, you know, that's another big thing. So again, these next few weeks are going to be extremely critical. And again, over these next few weeks is where we're going to see significant increases in the confirmed cases. And I think there's two reasons for that. Two is the capacity with our, with our testing. We're seeing an increased capacity in our, in the equipment and also with the number of tests that are being done. And the other piece is that, you know, there are. And the other piece is that, you know, there are folks out there that have COVID-19, but they're just not showing symptoms. You know, a lot of these folks also that are asymptomatic or presymptomatic are shedding the virus. And that's where we're going to see a lot more of these cases. So on that note, Mr. Mayor, did you have anything else that you wanted me to talk about?
If you could just add the importance of the emergency proclamation and the renewing of that under the circumstances.
Yeah, absolutely. So I think the emergency proclamation is key to reducing the transmission, the spread, and certainly keeping the staff members safe. I mean, without that, the virus can spread drastically in the city. You know, just a couple of cases, if we had one person come in, I'll give you an example. If we had one person come in that was COVID-positive, without us knowing about it, it could wipe out twenty-five percent of our workforce in just a day. And that would have a significant impact on the services provided, and that's just talking about one department. So I think, you know, with the decision that the mayor's made, which is what every, really every city and town is making, follow suit with guidance, federal guidance from the CDC and Maine CDC. And again, we're following the epidemiologist's recommendations. And if we can continue social distancing, and again, what the mayor's doing is, by following that guidance, he's keeping people in their homes, keeping people away from crowded places. Because at the end of the day, we want to do what we can to flatten the curve.
Thank you, Chief. And if I may add, Mr. President, I'd like to just, you know, publicly accolade Chief Turkott for the work that he's been doing. As he said, you'd be surprised, he's been prepping for this for months. My first department head meeting as the mayor, he mentioned this, and it was something that had just begun in China. And so he'd been preparing, securing appropriate materials, developing the appropriate policies. And so I applaud his tremendous efforts to be prepared for this crisis. And because of that, we are, at this time, all of our public safety personnel are extremely safe. That facility is extremely secure, and we are making sure that everybody stays healthy. I've visited with our public safety folks to show them our support. And when I enter the facility, I take my temperature, and I make sure that we do the appropriate social distancing. Everybody's healthy. We've taken a couple of photos just to document this time in history, as this is a time like no other. And, but Chief Turkott has done a tremendous job. He keeps us and the city administration updated on a regular basis, and him and I talk multiple times throughout the day to make sure that we are doing our best to keep our employees of the city and our residents and visitors safe. It's, that's paramount, this entire situation. And like Chief Turkott said, you know, there are public safety departments in this state who have had exposure in cases that are going to affect their department, and we're doing our best to try to limit the effect. We don't have a significant workforce, and if ten percent of our fire department or ten percent of our police department comes down with this, we could have a serious safety matter on our hand. And that's, again, some of the authority that's granted as part of the emergency legislation for us to seek the assistance of other municipalities or other resources to help us deal with some of these situations. So I really would hope that the council would support the effort to renew this state of emergency until deemed to be terminated. And we will continue to communicate and update the council on the actions taken as part of this state of emergency on a regular basis, as well as to the public. So thank you, Mr. President, for the opportunity to bring this legislation forward this evening.
Great. Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak on this subject? I cannot see Councillor Ghanjay or Vice President Turkott.
Yeah, I'd like to speak if you can't see me.
Yeah, I can see you now.
All right, perfect. I'd like to just ask the mayor, I know you're talking to the state. How often do you talk to other cities, other municipalities in the state?
Actually, I haven't specifically. We have open lines of communication through the Greater Portland Council of Governments. And so they are like acting as a conduit for us. So they are gathering all the information from every municipality and having it in an aggregate source, and they email us updates every day so that we can. And it's great to have a regional resource like the Greater Portland Council of Governments to be able to help us navigate that. We are in communication via email. Chief Turkott, more than any, is communicating regularly with his counterparts in the health officer world, as well as in the EMS response world, and they are on conference calls daily. I met with them today, and they were on a conference call discussing possibility of changes to transport laws and things like that for the transporting of patients. And so we are dealing with things every day. I've never seen anything.
I don't doubt it. I just wanted you to explain it, and this is not done and decided in a vacuum, that you are in communication, and these are, you know, the decisions that you're making with a comprehensive information in front of you. So I appreciate both your work and Angela as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Chow.
Yes, thank you. Mike, Mayor Foley, I want to thank you and tell you what a great job you're doing in this emergency. You know, I know we were running together, and I don't think this is what you were planned when you were wanting to run for mayor, but you're doing an excellent job, and I can't imagine a better person to do this. A couple of things about this order. So basically, it says every five days we have to reapprove this. So are we reapprove this every five days, or what's going on here?
No, the, in the, that state of emergency may continue for longer than five days. No state of emergency may continue for longer than five days unless renewed by the city council. And the order specifically, I'm sorry, Mr. President, I didn't wait to be acknowledged, but.
That's fine.
We're working through this. The, what we're asking for is that the state of emergency extend until such time the mayor or his designee deems fit to terminate the declared emergency. So we don't intend to ask for this every five days. And in our discussions with City Solicitor Natalie Byrne, she's been reviewing all this prepared legislation, and she feels that's appropriate under municipal law.
Natalie agrees that we, once we renew this, that it will last longer than five days. Because I'm reading nine-nine-five-b, and it seems like every five days we have to renew this.
Natalie, would you like to chime in?
Let me see, unmute her. She's.
There we go. I'm unmuted now. I believe that if you look at subsection B, and I apologize, I don't have it right in front of me, but I do have it right in front of me. What it says, and this is a standard provision in these types of ordinances for the municipalities that have adopted them, the first section, subsection A, states that the mayor has this authority. But then subsection B says that it cannot continue for longer than five days unless renewed by the city council. So that means that it's five days when the mayor initially does it, but the city council can renew it. It does not have to be renewed every five days.
Thank you. All right. The second part of this order, basically, the, you will provide a report of all the things you've done as the emergency order. And I see you've told us, and you also put in writing. In the end, I'm hoping you'll give us a report. When it's all over, you'll re-report this. And if you could notify us, I know that as a mayor, you have now more powers than ever. Have you made any orders or ordinances that you approve, that usually goes by city council, that we usually approve, but you, by your new executive authority, you've made any new ordinances?
So as I indicated, Mr. President, if I may.
Yep.
So as I indicated, to your point, I have tremendous amount of authority under this, and I take that very seriously. And so I want everybody to know that, clear to everyone, it's not, this isn't, this isn't something that is frivolous and decision-making, as Councillor Turkott suggested, isn't done through a vacuum. I have many officials who are helping me navigate these challenges and making these decisions under their advisement. But at this point, so the order itself doesn't call for a report of this on a regular basis. That is something that I've committed to as trying to be as transparent and have a public process that allows our citizens, you, the council, to have trust in me as your leader, to lead the community and report on that. If you'll notice, every couple of days, I have shared public announcements and all the action that I've taken. And that is something that, again, I take very seriously. At this point, I don't believe there's any specific orders that I have made that would normally have the council approval. I have authorized the expenditure of some finances for the purchase of supplies and in response to this event, that we will be aggregating those. Those, I haven't actually reported on that specifically, as we already have the authority to do that under the emergency purchasing ordinance. And when we have our next council meeting, we will report on those items. The other thing, as per the city ordinance, and I think the one, the one item that I suspended was, as folks may not know, Councillor Chow and Councillor Raganjay, as chair and the vice chair of the Finance Committee, they come in on a regular basis, along with an appointed city auditor that's separate from the actual city auditing firm, and they review all accounts payable. So basically, they review every check that the city writes and the associated bill and expense for that. That is a process that, they come in, and in order, a policy has states in order for the checks to actually be mailed out, we have to have the signature of two of those three officials. And so I have met with my finance staff and have suspended that, given that City Hall is closed to the public, and in effort to protect the employees who are here and who are critical to the operation of the city, I have, I shared with Finance Chair Chow that I wanted to suspend that service or that policy. And when I did that and spoke with my finance staff, I called him immediately to inform him of that. And I also have been in regular communication with Council President Riordan on the actions that I have taken. And so other than that, if I just reflect back real quick, you know, I think most of the actions I have taken are already granted in my authority as mayor to make changes, to declare a spending freeze in the management of the budget, and enact the emergency proclamation, which we're seeking review today. And then the management of employees and staff. There may be the only other thing, might be the cancellation of public meetings. That is something that the council may act on, or that may be something the council would have acted on had we not been in a state of emergency. And so those items are all outlined there, given the situation. Otherwise, you know, should a matter, a more serious matter in order be taken up, again, I will always be communicating that as best as possible with everyone. So I don't anticipate much that, that's within the authority that I already have. But we just want to retain that emergency proclamation in order to action. This situation moves so fast that sometimes, like I indicated, Portland's situation in ordering the bars closed, we literally made that suggestion right then and there. And should, you know, we had decided to do the same thing, we would have had to do that right then and there and not do that without, not be calling the council to meet for that. And so the item three, I'm trying to send this chapter to everyone in the meantime. But item number three, under Section nine-six, under the mayor's duties and emergency power, the, it says, I'm sorry, under Section A, it says during any period when an emergency or disaster exists or appears imminent, the mayor or his designee may program such regulations as he deems necessary and consistent with the purposes of this article to protect life property and to preserve critical resources. And it says such regulations include but are not limited to regulations prohibiting or restricting the movement of vehicles in an area within or without the city. As you'll have learned, in the town of Falmouth, they had a senior housing facility that they had multiple cases of the coronavirus at, and they have, I think, the town manager or whatever authorities granted, they have ordered the closure of the roads that lead to that facility. So that's the authority that I have. And then regulations facilitating or restricting the movement of persons within the city. If it comes to the point where we are ordered to, you know, stay, remain in our homes or something of that nature, I have that authority. Again, very serious stuff. Regulations pertaining to the movement of persons from hazardous areas within the city. So if, for some reason, we had a mass, a location where there was a mass amount of people who had this virus, we could prohibit them from leaving that facility, and we would work with our public safety folks in the CDC on that. So it's, you know, all surrounding, as Section Four says, regulations necessary to preserve public peace, health, and safety. And then there's, you know, the items such as finances and using other municipalities or other towns and cities to assist when is possible. So those are the types of other things that are appropriated within that ordinance. So as Councillor Chow said, it does provide a lot of authority, but I take it very seriously and will be working very hard. We have a tremendous staff and department head that help lead the city and keep residents and businesses safe at all times, even prior to this. And I have the utmost confidence in all of them to help us navigate that and provide me the appropriate advice. And I encourage, in department heads, in my time as mayor, to challenge me when necessary. And when they don't agree with me, I provide them that opportunity. And so I've, again, you know, made that suggestion. I even told Chief Turkott that I was concerned about closing of parks. You know, we're encouraged to remain, getting fresh air and stuff to stay healthy, but we also need to ensure the spread of this virus don't happen very fast. And that mayor may not have to decide, and Chief Turkott has been discussing that.
Councillor Chow, you're outside?
I think he's muted.
I can't hear him.
He's not muted, and we can't hear him.
Sorry, Mike, I'm muted on my little headset.
You're muted, you're wrong.
Yes, I muted myself. Thank you. All right, Mayor Foley, thank you for explaining that. I know you're doing everything in the best interest of Westbrook, and I appreciate your authority to act under these emergency regulations. If, I just want to ask that you inform us of things sort of going on that we need to know about. Just so, you know, when I get stopped at the Hannaford, I was told that things are going on, and it's like, oh, I didn't know that. So, you know, so it's kind of a little embarrassing to be stopped at Hannaford to be notified with what you sent out and me not being able to read it in time. So if you could make sure that we're well-informed, and then, and then if you're enacting ordinances, just let us know so we can let constituents know as well. The same, the finances, you'll, we'll approve your emergency spending later. I just want to make sure that we're keeping track of that, anything over three thousand dollars. And I still would like to perform my signing of the warrants after the whole thing's over. So if you keep them in a pile for me, I will be reviewing every single warrant that's out there.
Awesome. Thank you. Councillor Shaughnessy?
Yeah, I just also want to offer my appreciation, Mayor Foley, for your leadership in this and for all of the department heads and the chief. I mean, it feels very comforting. I, one of the things I'm curious about is when we decide that this, the, that the emergency is over and how it sort of phases out, because this is sort of unlike anything we've seen, and that it can be under the surface and we don't see it. We, you know, it kind of under the surface came, and it will hopefully go back. And just what are the, are there plans for how it kind of steps down in terms of, on the other side of this bell curve, so to speak?
Mayor Foley?
Thank you, Mr. President. At this point, we don't have specific plans. Chief Turkott has, you know, as far from a medical response and a medical protection plan as part of the emergency operations of our public safety folks, we have that prepared. But again, not knowing when this may end and what may happen, you know, one of the things we're considering is the development of our budget process, like what, at what time. We were nearly prepared to present a budget this past Monday to the, to the city council and through different things, that's been delayed. And now, given this financial crisis, we are seriously concerned about the revenues associated with our municipal budget. And so that is something that we know we need to bring forth, and we know what we're going to have to review, given the concern. to review, given the concerns that we have. So as things begin to go in the other direction, under advisement from the CDC and the state, you know, Governor Mills will begin to lift some of her executive orders. And we will work with the state, CDC to follow suit and to begin doing that. I'm, I'm fairly confident that things are going to get more stringent as we go forward, based on the press conferences that we watch on a daily basis from the CDC. They are heavily, heavily, heavily advising us to, to promote social distancing. And it's proven, they've even, CDC referred to studies from like the 1800s, where there was cities that didn't social distance and city that, social distance and other pandemics and the success rate. So they are working on that data, done as much as possible to suggest that of everyone. And a lot of people have not been complying with it. One of the reasons we understand Portland issued their order to close bars and restaurants and handle it the way they did is Saturday night, before we declared a state of emergency, they had a massive crowd down in their old port. And so we have been diligent to make sure that these things are appropriate in that manner. So we don't know when it's going to go the other way. Now it's ramping up, and so when the curve begins to go the other direction, we will begin to work to unwind some of these things. The great thing, and what I'm striving to do as your mayor, is to make as much municipal services available as possible under these certain conditions. There's other towns in our state that has completely shut the doors and completely sent employees home, though there, we are following the CDC guidelines and trying to maintain our workforce as long as possible to maintain vital city services, along with vital records, vehicle registration, building permit applications. Right now, we're not able to provide building permit inspections, because again, that involves, so our code enforcement staff and planning staff are developing methods to try to do that under the conditions. You know, we talked about potentially today doing a site walk via Zoom and our city planner being onsite at a construction site by herself, walking through and navigating this. So there's all these different things that we're exploring to try to maintain city services as much as possible. The essential and vital needs of our community. Anything not essential, we have the library and programming at the community center. But we are maintaining the essential services. But our community center and library staff are performing vital cleaning to ensure that our facilities are clean. And at the community center specifically, we were exploring the possibility of housing some childcare under the CDC guidelines for emergency personnel who are residents of Westbrook. And they are working with nonprofit organizations such as Meals on Wheels, who today delivered a week's worth of meals to residents. All their volunteers are in the age category that, that the CDC highly recommends to remain home. And so they literally were decimated of their volunteers. And our community center staff was able to follow CDC guidelines and assist in the delivery of those meals. So without those vital resources, we, some of our residents may go hungry. And so we're really, really working hard to do that. And the school department, which I'm, I hope to have Peter, Dr. Peter Lancia, Superintendent Lancia tomorrow, join me on a Facebook Live to outline the efforts that the school department is doing and some of the changes that are coming down on their efforts. And to, so the community can hear from him and learn the different things that he's doing to be able to continue to serve the community. So this is a situation like no other. And at early on, we were talking about when we think we might reopen City Hall. And that's why some of the decisions that we've made have become more open-ended, such as the canceling of meetings until further notice, such as the canceling of public events. We, you know, I was talking with the Chair of the Westbrook Whore Community Chamber today about the potential cancellation of Westbrook Together Days, a devastating blow to our community and a festival that we have on an annual basis. And it's, it's under serious consideration. And so we have to begin to feel what happens in those situations. Me personally, I'm looking forward to the NBA and the NHL to get going again and have some fun and entertainment for us. But that is stuff that, tough decisions that we have to make and we're navigating those. So as the curve begins to go in the other directions and we begin to unload some of the sanctions and stuff that we put in, we will begin to communicate that with the council on a regular basis.
Council Shaughnessy, you all set?
I'm set.
All right, is there any other discussion? Council Store?
I just want to clarify, is this extension limited to the COVID-19 emergency or all future declarations of states of emergency?
I believe it's only for this emergency right here. And I think that our city solicitor had already said that, but Natalie, if you want to chime in?
Yes, that is correct. Each emergency has to have its own separate declaration. Each one is initially for five days, and then each one has to be renewed by the City Council for any longer period of time.
Thank you.
Okay, Chief Turkot?
President, I was just looking at the new CDC guidelines. It just came out at 5:30. Maine now meets US CDC's criteria for a moderate level of community transmission, which means that widespread and/or sustained transmission with high likelihood or confirmed exposure with communal settings with potential for rapid increase and suspected cases is going to occur.
So, Lehman, can you elaborate on that?
Basically, that means that we're going to see a lot more cases in the coming weeks.
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
A quick question, follow-up question. So we are, what, what was the rating before then?
What? We were at a low level of community.
Low, now it's moderate. And what, do you know what, what high means?
Let me pull that up for you. I know it's somewhere where we do not want to be.
Is it a number of cases or proximity of people living to, close to each other? I mean, I'm just trying to understand.
So I, I will get back to on that, but I think it, I think there's two components to it. I think it's the approximate number of cases or anticipated number of cases, but also relative to the number of tests that they have available.
I see, okay. Could you just email me?
Yes.
Have a question.
Council Reganjay?
Yeah, I'm not sure why you can't see me, though I've been raising my hand.
I can see you now.
He's selective.
I just want to make a comment that I really, as much as we appreciate everything the city mayor is doing, but I was not even notified that we didn't have to go to, as a finance team, just for the record, I was not notified. Neither Chow or Mayor told me that we didn't have to go to review the finances. But that's okay, I understand what they're going through, but I just wanted to mention that. And I have a question for Mayor and also Andy. As things continue to be spread around, I'm not sure if you have developed any strategy or tools to communicate with non-English speakers, because everything you do, you are telling people in English. But I'm not sure if non-English speakers are really getting this information and to be able to prevent themselves from this kind of munitions.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. That, that, Council Reganjay is extremely important to me. I'll just quickly address, I did send out notification to the public and the City Council yesterday that it outlined the termination of that, the Finance Committee stuff. I, given that the, the City Hall had been closed to the public, I apologize, I didn't call and speak with you directly. As, as I've indicated, this has been a very moving target. I did have a chance to, I'm trying to communicate with the key people surrounding things. So that way, it's, my time isn't bogged down. I've invested, you know, 80 hours of time in this, just this past week. And so it's, it's making sure that I'm notifying, Council Riordan and I, Council President Riordan and I talk multiple times a day on a regular basis, and I try to update him as the point person of the City Council. And then I spoke to Council Chow specifically as the Chair of the Finance Committee. And I apologize, I didn't call you. But as far as the language thing is concerned, so as I indicated, I'm very proud that we launched a Facebook page, I'm sorry, a city website that is specifically speaks to the city's response to this, the, this crisis. And so all of the information, all of my letters that I write, yes, they're only in English, but all of the information that's outlined in those letters is on our website. And our website is incorporated with Google Translate. And so all of the content that's on our website can be translated to any language that's desired on our coronavirus-specific webpage. And I do know that all the school-specific communication is being translated into the multiple languages associated with the school on their website specifically. And so that has been important to me and our marketing team, marketing communications team under the leadership of Tina Riddell. Tina has done an outstanding job getting that website up and running. She had that up and running within hours of all the detailed information associated with this response. And that has that translate function. That was brought to my attention by constituents as well, and I assured them that we have that availability.
And I would, I would just like to add that I take some responsibility that also, after talking with the mayor or reading that, I should follow up with Council Chow and Council Reganjay to make sure that they understood that communication. But in the future, we will, I will do better, so. Chief Turkot?
So just, just a couple of follow-up points. So as the mayor alluded to, we've had quite a few meetings with the school department, and they are putting notices out in multiple languages. I believe Assistant Superintendent Menzoni stated 17 languages. And as the Mayor Foley just discussed, we do have the option, or folks have the option, for Google Translate. In addition, the last week, week and a half, we've really been focusing on outreach and education to senior housing, in particular Westbrook Housing Authority, the nursing homes and all the other senior living facilities within Westbrook. And as you can imagine, or people may not know, there are quite a few facilities that Westbrook has. And as you all know, that's, that's the most vulnerable population, so we wanted to focus on them first. Our next priority target is to work with, you know, the other groups within the community. So we will be reaching out to ICC, and Claude, I'll be, I'll be sending you an email later on tonight about how we can target that audience, those audiences.
Yeah, again, there is not really any blame here. Just, we understand the crisis we're in. It's something that we deal on a daily basis. And we, we completely understand if somebody may have forgotten to do something, that is not a blame situation here. The reason why I raised the issue of non-English speakers, as you know, some of them may not even have the literacy to go to a website and download some of those documents. So as Chief Andy and the mayor, as you continue to talk to people off Facebook Live, just keep in mind that there are some of those people, the same way you're talking about the senior living, there are people really don't speak English, who can not even navigate a computer to download messages. So keep in mind that those people may be vulnerable if we don't have anywhere to reach out to them. That's why we like to have, as Chow said, as many information as you can, send it to us. We are working with other community leaders across the state to actually create videos to try to send to, to the community as well, because they can get those information through a WhatsApp video and open up. So the more information we have, the better we can send it to the community outside. So there is no, we'd rather have more communication than less communication. So send us more information as you have them available, we'll be happy to continue to share with the community.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on this resolve? That Council Morse? Please unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I just want to say that I have a lot of confidence in the administration's capacity to manage this crisis. And I think that they've demonstrated good judgment during the emergency so far. And because of that, I definitely want to support this resolve to extend the emergency powers. I do understand that there are maybe some people watching this who will read about it later that might have some discomfort with the open-endedness of the duration. But I think that they should keep in mind that while these powers are substantial, the administration is still ultimately accountable to the council. And this is an unprecedented and open-ended crisis. And I think that the requests of the administration for this type of resolve is appropriate under the circumstances. And I also, I know there's been some concern expressed about the communication maybe with the counselors, but I think that the communication with the public has been really great. And I haven't heard from anyone, anything but praise about the way that the, the city's kind of been, been jumping ahead of these issues. And I think it's important that people feel like, you know, somebody's in control. And when they're getting all this communication from the city, I think it helps alleviate some of their anxiety.
Absolutely. Any other discussion on this?
Yeah, as I'm listening to this, I'm thinking, you know, there, that maybe, that, that, I'm just thinking about the gaps that we haven't, haven't got, we're kind of moving, you know, through different channels to get to different people. And I'm, I'm thinking of it as like a campaign, that, you know, it wouldn't be bad to have something like signs out there that said, you know, wash your hands for 20 seconds, you know, that just gave the basic kind of, those, those actions, those hygienic actions or whatever, that, that would help mitigate this. And, and there's, you know, as much as we try through the internet and other ways, there's going to be people that aren't going to see it, you know? And I think as the, as this tapers down, it will always have the opportunity to put back, unless those best practices aren't kind of ingrained in us. And so just a thought is that we may want to, we might want to take it to the, in a way that kind of reflects the kind of vibrancy that we would put to a political campaign or something like that to really get the word out.
Can you see me, President Riordan?
I cannot, but do you have a comment?
Yes, I just want to, first, I want to say I absolutely adore the art behind Counselor Shaughnessy. And I really, really appreciate it as the daughter of artists. So it's beautiful, especially the stained glass. And second issue, I wanted to say, I just saw a digital banner in New York City, something about wash your hands, save lives, or stay home, save lives. So I, you know, I would, I would support that. I don't know how fast and how expensive that would be to have, you know, paper or cloth banners. We don't need digital, but, but something that alerts people outside, the ones that are outside. The ones that are inside, they're probably online and they're seeing all that. But the ones that, you know, choose not to isolate, I would, I would, I would second that.
All right. Mr. Mayor, do you have your hand up?
Yes, if I may, Mr. President. The, as far as that, we will look into potential signage. We did launch the city's message board sign at City Hall, encouraging people to check the website. I'll add some, I'll work with our staff to add something in there about washing hands and the social distancing. So we, we will, I think, I'm not sure if the other ones have been launched. We actually have been having some technical difficulties. And maybe we can look into potentially securing additional ones of those to help as we had needed some anyways. And then also potentially getting some sort of printed sign or signage to do that. We have been blessed to have a light winter this year. And so our public services staff are, you know, able and ready. And so if that's something that we can get them to help us with, we will try to do that. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, Council Chow? All right. Counsel Chow?
Yes, thank you. Back to the termination emergency and the council renewing. Questions from three to Natalie, 9.5 termination emergency. Basically, when the mayor or satisfied the emergency no longer exists, he may terminate, he or she may terminate the emergency. And 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 then also Section B, no state emergency continue longer than five days unless renewed by city council. I think I, Natalie says that we just have to renew it once and then you're good forever. And I love Mayor Foley is doing an amazing job by and and but my job is to look for holes. So let's say that Mayor Foley goes power crazy and and never terminates his emergency. We have no way of getting back the government. So if 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 Section B is correct, that we only have to renew it once, we should have a Section C where we can take it back if shouldn't it needed be. If that's what, if Natalie says we just have to renew it once, then we need a way to get it back. Because the five days is a limiter. And 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 there's nothing bad about Mike. I love Mike to death. He's amazing. Love him like a brother, but should we have a bad mayor? I don't want to see him abuse Section 9.5B.
Mr. President?
Well, Natalie, do you have any comments on that or?
Mr. President, if I might add, while we wait for.
Sorry, I had to, go ahead, Mr. Mayor, sorry.
If I may add, given that that now the council has been granted the authority to have a public meeting under Maine statute, I think, should there be a situation where I don't get sleep for days and as as Counsel Chow suggests, I go crazy and start ordering people to do stupid things, then I think the council would have the authority under its ordinances to call an emergency meeting and and get the council together and terminate the emergency or refuse the renewal of the emergency. But we can ask a city solicitor burns to speak to that.
Yes, I would say that, while I understand Counselor Chow's position on this, if you look at other sections of the ordinance, the definition of a disaster, which is what this falls under and the section nine dash four, which discusses an emergency proclamation, they they do seem to be tied to a specific situation. And when that situation no longer exists, it's my opinion that the mayor would be required to terminate the proclamation. I did not look at the proclamation itself, but I believe that there is similar language in the body of that. I should say, I haven't looked at it just now. So I think among those various things, I felt comfortable that this was not something that could be extended indefinitely. The immediate crisis has passed and there is no 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 longer a need for an emergency proclamation.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. If if you do have time, look at, I know you're busy, I know we're all busy and this is this is a back burner. But if this is a hole, I want to fix sometime in the next 10, 20 years or some sometime, but not not now. I understand it. Everything's going fine and and I trust Mayor Foley is doing an amazing job, but I don't like holes. Thank you.
And Counsel President, if I may add.
Mayor Foley?
So also under the city ordinances, under Article One of the city charter, there there is, there is the authority of the city council to remove the mayor from office. And so again, that's, you know, a very serious matter. But should there be a neglect of duty under Section 2.6 of the city charter, the mayor may be may be removed by the office of the city council for official misconduct or neglect of duty. And at any meeting of the city council, it shall be in order for any member to give written notice of that. And if removed from office, the council president would assume the responsibilities of mayor. So I think the, as as the city solicitor mentioned, there is authority to deal with this. And should there be adverse things that happen? And I I know you said you trust me and I know it's about, I know it's about the future, but I think that that much authority is there for the city council to deal with stuff should things continue inappropriately.
All right. Is there any other discussion on this resolve? Did I see anyone else? Raise your hand.
Say something.
All right. So seeing none. It's been moved by Counsel Chow, seconded by Counsel Morse for the resolve of order of the resolve of 202014. Madam Clark, roll call, please.
Counselor Oganja?
Yes.
Counselor Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Counselor Morse?
Yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Vice President Turkot?
Yes.
Counselor Story?
Yes.
President Riordan?
Yes, seven in favor, none opposed. The resolve passes. And I believe this is the last item on tonight's agenda. And let me just see if there's, and there's no questions. So again, thank you very much for meeting like this. I think it went well for the very first time. And meeting to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
And seconded by, Chief, you can't, you can't. Counsel Morse and who seconded it? Counselor Shaughnessy. Are those in favor? Roll call.
That's right, we have to do a roll call for this. Counselor Oganja?
Yes.
Counselor Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Counselor Morse?
Yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Vice President Turkot?
Yes.
Counselor Story?
Yes.
President Riordan?
Yes, seven in favor, we are adjourned. Good night.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye bye.
Bye.